Okay, all rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes from the meeting held May 23rd, 2022. So moved. Second?
I will second.
Okay, we'll mention in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five, nothing. Special reports? Not seen anything.
You're fine.
Audience comments. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address counsel on a non-agenda item for up to five minutes unless extended by counsel.
I think maybe jumped the gun a little bit on that.
Anybody have a?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, please state your name and your address and...
Yep.
You know, if they give us the number, just street.
Yep, Tberry Lane in Peters Township.
And your name?
Lucas Cody.
Okay.
Hey, counsel, Lucas Cody here. Wanted to raise a concern with the proposed Wild, or I'm sorry, Woodbrier plan that was submitted by Venetia Road LLC. Understand this is not on the agenda for tonight, but just wanted to raise these issues early to make sure they're considered in your subsequent planning meetings. Again, live in Sienna Woods at 109 Tberry Lane, and our property is adjacent to the proposed development for Woodbrier. Specifically, the plans are lots 16, 17, and 18. Few concerns that I wanted to raise here tonight, just to bring to your attention. So the first one is the proximity of the proposed plans to my property. Based on the current available plans, it looks like lots 16, 17, 18, and 19 will be as close as legally permissible to my property line. In contrast, there's a significant amount of green space and walking areas that are proposed on the north side of Woodbrier, which allows the residents of Great Meadows a lot more reprieve from the commotions that come with a project like this. As a parent with my young and little children over there, I'm not interested really in having my backyard be a construction zone for foreseeable future. The second concern that I wanted to raise here was just the noise disruption for the neighborhood. The current plan is to build 80, well, 80 home homes on 40 acres. So this is a massive undertaking to develop a relatively small area of land. For comparison, according to the Planning Committee's 2021 annual report, there's almost one and a half times as many more new lots being proposed in this development alone than there were for the entire Peters Township new lots last year. That was 80 in this new one versus just 54 that were new lots from last year. So this will be a significant increase in noise, heavy machinery traffic, and general disruption to our community in order to complete this project. And then lastly, the third issue that I wanted to raise with this plan was the traffic hazard. This proposed plan for Woodbrier is going to open the Wildbrier cul-de-sac, which is in Sienna Woods, and create a throughway down to Venetia Road. So Sienna Woods, if you haven't been there, it's a lightly trafficked family community. Personally, we go out, walk our dog, walk our family quite a bit, and my concern is that there's going to be a huge number of new residents living in Woodbrier. That, along with the increased thoroughfare and traffic from the Venetia Road that will cut through to the ways to get to Route 19, could cause a safety hazard, crash risk, and noise nuisance for me, my family, and my fellow neighbors in Sienna Woods. So again, understand this isn't necessarily on the agenda for a vote or for approval tonight. I just wanted to take the time to raise some of these concerns that you guys are starting to plan and continuing to evaluate. Thanks for your consideration.
Ed, is this on the schedule yet for the Planning Commission?
It's not on the schedule yet. It just came in. This was the initial notification to the neighborhood.
Correct, yep. It just got the notification.
And it's preliminary. It's, no one's locked into any specific design at this time. There'll be plenty of opportunity for you to attend meetings and voice any concerns that you have.
Sure.
But what you're looking at now, did you look at it on the website?
Yes.
It's preliminary.
Okay. That's good to hear. I mean, again, the way that it's oriented, it comes, my lot is the closest lot in the entire development that will, you know, be adjacent to this plan.
Can you elaborate a little bit so that he's cognizant of what this process becomes with the Planning Commission's going to hold a public meeting?
There'll be multiple meetings on this development. It starts with Planning Commission, and I think in the letter that we sent you, we showed you how to keep track of when it'll appear on an agenda.
Correct.
It's in the letter. So it'll go to Planning Commission, it'll come to council, and that's for preliminary plan approval. Then it'll come back through to Planning Commission and council for a final approval. So there'll be at least four opportunities to present any concerns that you have at those meetings. Plus, as we work with the development and get it in a final form, we'll let the residents see what shape it's taking as we move through the process.
All right, sounds good. Appreciate the feedback. This is my first time being part of this process. I know, you know, both the committee and the Planning Committee need to vote and evaluate this. Just wanted to take an opportunity.
And there is staff input that will be contributed to the evolution there also, so...
It's just starting through the approval process. There's lots of review that needs to occur.
Okay.
Who's the builder on that?
It'll be Hartland.
Okay.
Says it was submitted by Venetia Road LLC. I know it's a Hartland plan, but I was curious about that LLC as well. I mean, again, I know it's not on the agenda for today, but...
So your question is?
The builder is Hartland, right, but the applicant is Venetia Road LLC. Is that a subsidiary of Hartland?
It is not. It's a private citizen who is buying the land to develop it for the purpose of selling the lots to Hartland Homes.
Okay.
What is common is that when you see a development occurring, LLCs are created amongst the people who have a primary interest in it. And these are created for the purpose of doing that development, and then they'll disappear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience care to address counsel?
On the non-agenda item.
Okay, seating now will move on. First item on the agenda in our new business would be setting a date for the public hearing for proposed zoning ordinance amendments.
The proposed zoning ordinance amendment has been reviewed by the Planning Commission last week. They are recommending approval. The process requires that there be a public hearing held by council, and I'm proposing July 11th, which is a regular council meeting for the night to hold the public hearing.
So moved.
I just think it's premature. We don't really have a concept of what this developer is convening other than the presentation that was made here a month or two ago. And I, I mean, I was opposed to it then. I respect the fact that council has a right to review its decision based on a lack of a full crowd here, but...
Anybody want a second? Before we go on? Paul, do you have a second? You want to have a second?
Wait to...
To break this at the item?
Schedule a, to schedule a public hearing day.
I'll second it.
Okay. The issue I have, and it was brought to my attention from a citizen, was regarding whether we followed Robert's rules in doing this. If I remember correctly, I'm not an expert on Robert's rules, but we have the ability to either renew the decision or reconsider. So in this instance, a reconsideration would require somebody on the winning side of the initial vote, so Frank, Bob, or I bringing up that motion, or the renewal would be anybody from council. The issue that the resident brought forward was that, Paul, you brought that up at the last meeting, so...
I only asked the question, and the reason I asked the question is it wasn't clear to me what council wanted to do. One of the things that I did prior to that meeting was to have a discussion with the township solicitor to find out whether it's even possible to bring them back up. It was John's opinion that it was, and I was just trying to find out whether council wanted it considered or not.
John, are you okay with that?
You know what, the mechanism you bring up, Mr. Steiger, I don't remember looking at the mechanism for Robert's rules. I know that under the theory, you could revisit it. The answer is yes. Now, the mechanism, I don't think I looked at that as an issue. Because this is a zoning ordinance, it's not something like a zoning hearing board where there's a stoppage issues or race judicat issues where you can't retry the same. If the applicant comes in for a variance and fails, arguably, he can't come in and start anew the same exact application. One of the other issues, I think, at the time was, and I'm not sure, Ed, I haven't seen this followed through, were there any changes made to the, is it the same?
Same.
Same thing. If council wants, I can look at that from a Robert's rules standpoint. I will tell you, I did not consult with Robert's rules as to whether the majority or minority has to actually vote to revisit that issue. I know it can come before you, but I don't know the procedure offhand as to whether what you're saying is true.
And you might revisit a meeting that I chaired and took a role of reconsidering action that we took based on Mr. Berquist's request.
I remember that. Well, what did we do for man or way when we brought it up?
And...
Well, I know it came up and we were allowed to vote, and I just don't remember if there was an issue as to, Gary's bringing up as a procedural issue, not so much a voting issue. It can be voted on, it's just, is there a certain procedure that needs to be followed to get it back before this council?
Well, then, in an abundance of caution, I will withdraw my motion with the understanding that you will review that and we can revisit it at the next meeting. So I guess I'll make a motion that we table this issue to the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing. Second one will be a resolution opposing Magisterial District reestablishing plan for the 27th Judicial District.
So as council is aware, the Washington County courts are in the process of proposing a change to the Magisterial Districts in Washington County. Specifically, what they intend to do is to drop two, or proposing to do is to drop two Magisterial Districts. One of those, which would be the Magisterial District that would have encompassed Peters Township. What is being proposed is that a district be created that would incorporate McDonald's, Cecil Township, and Peters Township. In January, the Washington County Court System had submitted to the state of Pennsylvania a proposed redistricting map that maintained the Peters Township Magisterial, the Magisterial District in which Peters Township is located, and combined it with North Strabane. Chief Grimes and I had an opportunity to sit with the president judge, as well as Patrick Grimm, the court administrator, to discuss this and express our concerns. What we believe would serve the interests of the township best is if, in fact, the, what was proposed in January with slight modification, be adopted by the Washington County Courts, which would create a Magisterial District that consists of Peters Township, North Strabane, and Houston. Interestingly, I had a chance today to talk to the manager from Cecil Township. Cecil Township shares our concern with regard to the configuration that has been proposed, and the manager believes that the Board of Supervisors will be taking action in opposition to a Magisterial District that combines our two municipalities. What they recognize is what we recognize, is that the connections east and west is, in Washington County, are not as logical as the connections that are north and south. So in front of council tonight, and then there's a slightly revised version of the, of a resolution expressing council's opposition, and the only real difference is, is it drops the reference to the Magisterial District number that used to exist and refers rather to the configuration that we would like to see, which is Peters Township, North Strabane, and Houston.
Anybody have any more position to that?
Absolutely not.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 06-01-22, expressing council's opposition to the revised Magisterial District reestablishing plan.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion from council, audience, and comments?
The only thing I would want to say is, is that, you know, it seems to me that they are trying to, through these various machinations, to come up with a way so that districts like Peters, that doesn't have an actual district justice at the present time, somehow, that's a compelling factor for that.
Yeah.
And why should that be? I mean, I think that when you're looking at factors, you need to look at number of cases, the area, the, you know, the growth, the things that, you know, we've all talked about amongst our, you know...
Yeah, but that's one of the criteria.
Well, it doesn't look like they're doing that.
No, the criteria for the state is if the office is open.
If the seat's empty.
That way, nobody loses their job.
Yes. I know, but that makes absolutely no sense!
And Mr. Curry, I agree with you entirely, because, you know, one of the, one of my discussions was, if in fact these seats weren't vacant, is this how you would do this? And the answer is absolutely not. But it's two things that drive this. It's vacant seats have to be eliminated, and every magistrate has to be in the district in which, in which their district is located. So what you end up with, and what you see here is, in our case, there's a district magistrate who lives in McDonald, and there's a district magistrate that lives in Houston, and somehow or another, you have to be connected to one or the other. And that's why I think connecting Peters, North Strabane, and Houston makes sense, because that gets you that north-south 19 corridor.
There was, there was a magistrate in North Strabane. What's happening there?
There still is.
Yeah. And the other thing, you know, Cecil will have to, at some point, have a magistrate run against a Peters potential magistrate, and the office may move right back, you know, and I'm sure they don't want that either, because they shouldn't be elected, aren't they?
Well, what we have been told is that the, that the office in Cecil cannot stay there because it's physically not large enough to accommodate the merged staff that's going to be there. The staff in Washington County is not going to be any smaller. It's the, they're going to be just less magistrate's office, so they're going to need a bigger office. Judge DeSalle and Mr. Grimm understand our concern about having that office somewhere near the border of either Cecil or North Strabane, depending how this is oriented, and so that office is going to move as well.
So they're eliminating the magistrates, but they're not eliminating any of their staff?
That's my understanding. Just as bizarre. All right.
So you're going to have one, so essentially, you're going to have one judge doing the work of two, is what it's going to come down to?
Yes.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries five, nothing. Next item will be a special permit request by CFS Bank for a car cruise on September 13th.
CFS Bank will be celebrating their 20th anniversary, and they will be looking for permission to have a car cruise on their property on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. They are indicating that they've made arrangements with the school district to allow parking on the middle school. It's going to be my suggestion to council, because this is going to happen anyhow, is that we give them permission for those couple hours to also utilize our parking lot. One thing I will say, CFS Bank has been a good partner for the township. They've helped us with deposits, night deposits and that, out of the tennis center. The other thing is, they're the only financial institution in town that was willing to help us with our drop accounts for our police department, so...
I'll make a motion that we approve the, an issue, the CFS Bank for the car cruise to take place on Tuesday, September 23rd.
13th? 13th.
It says 23rd, yeah.
Is it the 13th or the 23rd? How about this, whatever date it is in September, that's correct. It does say September 13th on the application.
That's what it is, then.
Okay, so it's September 13th, 2022, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I believe that we should offer to them the opportunity to park in Peters Township areas.
Second. Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five, nothing. Next item will be a special permit for a 5K walk/run on the Montour Trail from, on Sunday, July 24th.
Yes. This request is coming in from an organization known as Always Be Smiling. It's a not-for-profit that attempts to support children and families with disabilities. What they want to do is to have a 5K walk/run. It would be housed at Mr. and Mrs. Robinson's property along Valley Brook Road. They are asking that the Montour Trail be closed in that area. My suggestion to them is they need to talk to the Montour Trails Council, because we lease that portion of the trail to them. One thing I will mention to you, though, is, and this will be coming to you at a later date, Always Be Smiling wants to work with Mr. Robinson for the purpose of upgrading the small structure on that property to house events that they intend to do on an ongoing basis with disabled children, so...
On the trail or just?
On his property. And the reason why this works for them, a lot of their activity are trail-oriented. There are special bikes for children with cerebral palsy. But that will be coming to you later. This is a separate event.
All right, I'll move that we approve a special permit for Always Be Smiling for a 5K walk/run to be held on Sunday, July 24th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries five.
Paul, how are we going to notify the public that that's going to be closed?
I don't know that it's going to be closed. They're going to have to reach out to the Montour Trail Council and ask them whether that's even possible. If it is, we can work with the Montour Trail Council. Don't let people know.
Okay, next item will be a resolution amending the Peters Township Act 537 plan to provide sewer jacks for the 1781 Club Development.
So this, at the site of the 1781 golf course, they're expanding and renovating their clubhouse. I believe because they're now draining sewerage in a different direction from what they did previously, the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority is requiring them to get approval of a sewerage facilities plan. So as you can see in your docket, that plan has been examined and by various agencies, all of which believe that it's in compliance, and it's my recommendation that council adopt Resolution 6222, amending the Peters Township Act 537 sewerage facility plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries five, nothing. Item F will be the award of a contract for the 2022 pavement rejuvenator program.
So the annual paving program is historically funded from a variety of sources, including state liquid fuels fund, local share funds, which are gaming funds that come to Peters Township, money from the unconventional gas well, and in this, in this year, there's a significant portion of the money is coming from the American Rescue Plan funds. In addition, there is work that we're doing in conjunction with utilities, which will result in a reimbursement of $39,000 to the township. So what is available for the 2022 paving program is $2,069,000. One of the things that has occurred this year is that the revenues from the liquid fuels fund, which can only be used for these kind of purposes, are $37,000 in excess of what was budgeted. And in addition to that, the unconventional gas well impact fees will be an additional $242,800 more than what is budgeted. To date, we've committed $235,000, $35,825 to the road paving program. We took bids for the rejuvenator program. This is something that we do on an annual basis, and those bids came in for a total price of $146,548. You know, maintenance of roads is a core function of the township, and it's essential that we continue to maintain our local road system. So it's going to be my recommendation that council direct me to prepare a budget amendment so that the revenues received in excess of the budget estimates can be appropriated to fund the 2022 road maintenance program, and that council will award a bid for the 2022 pavement rejuvenator project, the pavement technologies, in the amount of $146,548.40.
What's the, didn't I see something in here about doing a budget amendment?
Yes. We are going to need to do, if, in fact, you award this, we are going to need to do a budget amendment.
Well, I noticed the next item on the agenda was the Marlborough Drive Storm sewer project, which we've budgeted...
$580,000.
$580,000, which apparently, I would assume, is going to be rebid for spring...
About next year.
So wouldn't that have, couldn't we just use that money, or would we still have to do a budget?
We would have, we'd have to do a budget amendment, and I would suggest it for a couple reasons. One, like, the liquid fuels money is a dedicated money from the state of Pennsylvania that needs to be used for road maintenance. So you want to designate that money, and you can only do that through a budget amendment. The money from Marlborough's sewer project is actually in an account that is sewer projects. And so we'd have to repurpose it to do highway projects, in which case you'd have to do a budget amendment anyhow.
Okay, I just was wondering. I'll make a motion that we direct the, well, that we award the bid for the 2022 pavement rejuvenator project to Payment Technology, Inc., in the amount of $146,548.40, and that the manager prepare a budget amendment so that the revenues received in excess of budget estimate can be appropriated to fund the 2022 road maintenance program when the township manager deems such amendment to be appropriate. Because we usually do that later in the year.
We do, but we have, I believe there are actually two items that are sitting out there that are significant nature, and I think that, I would feel more comfortable if, in fact, we move those ahead sooner.
Well, then you do it as soon as practical.
Okay.
How's that? That's my motion.
Second. Okay, motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I do. I have a question. Mark, am I imagining that you talked to us about the escalator that was going to occur in the paving contract?
You are not imagining it.
Okay, and could you remind me of what you were projecting that to become?
Well, if, you know, we check the index, what we do is we compare the index from when we bid it in March to when the asphalt was put down. The only comparison we had at the time was the May index, and if all the asphalt in the contract were put down in May, it was like a $38,000 delta. That's not going to occur, obviously. It'll be put down in July and August.
And it'll be a lot higher.
We don't know what's going to happen with the asphalt index. But, I mean, I'm thinking order a magnitude, $50,000, $60,000 is what it could be.
And these numbers here assume an increase of $50,000.
Yeah. All right, that's what I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Any other discussion, audience? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five, nothing. Next item will be the award of a contract for the Marlborough Drive Storm Sewer Project.
So the 2022 budget includes an appropriation of $580,000 for the Marlborough Drive Storm Sewer Project. Bids were received for the project on Friday, June 3rd. Only one firm bid, their bid was, in total, $886,865. It's going to be, Mr. Zomitis, and my recommendation, that the bids be rejected, in part because, given the scale of the project, and you only have one bidder. The other thing is, this is so far off of what we perceive to be the estimate for the project, that I think that it makes sense to go back out again. The thing that, I also agree with Mr. Zomitis, is that the time to go back out probably is not now, because I don't think the circumstances that caused us to be in this position will not change in the immediate future. And what we're proposing is that we go out either very late this year or early next year and rebid this project. The thing that concerns both Mark and I is that, you know, you have a situation where there is damage occurring to people's homes as a result of large storms, and those people are going to be left with a potential... are going to be left with the potential of that kind of situation again occurring, depending on whether we have large storms. One of the things that Mark and I weren't sure whether it made sense, whether council would want to reject these bids tonight, or you would want to give the people who live there an opportunity to come in and speak to us. I can tell you, it's not going to change my recommendation, because I don't think it's fiscally prudent to award such a large contract with only one bid.
Well, I mean, there's no question we're going to have to fix it at some point. I mean, seeing those videos that we saw last year, that water coming down into those people's backyards, I mean, we can't leave it go. But at the same time, I mean, it's $306,000 over what we budgeted for it.
It's like 40% more.
Right. And I mean, we all know that has something to do with the current market right now. I mean, we can hope that when we get to next year, that prices are going to come down a little bit. So I mean, I think it's important, maybe we should let the residents know, send them a letter or something, and let them know that, you know, we've rejected the bids, but we certainly aren't going back on our promise that we were going to help them there.
Well, I think that's one of the things that Paul wanted to kind of emphasize tonight was to make sure that council still is committed to doing this project. I plan to call the two residents that are affected, and meet with them in person, and also send letters, but to explain the situation wherein. The one thing I do think, and you're right, Frank, with the market conditions just being sideways right now with respect to the labor availability and materials prices and supply chain issues, you know, I called several of the contractors that attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting that I was surprised didn't submit a bid, and I asked them why. And it was basically, you know, there are a lot of opportunities out there right now so they can afford to be a little bit choosy on what suits their firm, you know, so to speak. And then the other thing was just market conditions, you know, it's just, you know, it's, they're waiting, you know, two, three times longer to get piped than they used to, and there's deadlines to this project from a restoration standpoint. We wanted to try to start it in July, get it done in September to grow grass, you know. So I think there's a lot of pressures just from the market conditions right now. And our hope was that, you know, maybe if you bid this out in the winter, you give contractors time to clear their 2022 schedule out, and maybe they're a little bit more hungry for work in 2023 trying to fill up schedules. That would be the hope. Hopefully, market conditions have normalized to some degree by then, too, and we get, number one, more bids, and number two, better prices.
Well, I'll make a motion that we reject the bid of Alex Paris, and we put this back on the agenda for a rebid in the winter, or the end of this year or beginning of next year.
I'll second it begrudgingly.
Now, I'd make the motion begrudgingly, too.
Yeah, I mean, I feel bad for these people, but I mean, you know, we're willing to appropriate $580,000 and go another $300,000. I mean, that's going to dig into these other types of projects that are similar in nature. I mean, there's going to be less funding for those people, and, you know, this is something we're doing, basically, out of the goodness of our heart, so.
Yeah, and I mean, seeing those videos we saw, I think that's probably the worst stormwater situation I've seen in all the years I've been on council. I feel terrible for those people, but I just don't see how we can spend that amount of money right now.
I would agree with you, with it being one of the worst, obviously. I don't know about Mr. Lewis, because he's been around longer than me, it's pretty bad.
Okay, any further discussion, please?
Any audience comments?
Audience comments, any? Okay, motion of the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing.
Okay, one thing, Paul, I saw in here that you said if we reject the bids, you want to pursue storm sewer lining projects that were deferred in favor of this?
Yes.
Need a motion for that?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion, any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing to move forward with deferred projects. Final item of new business, we propose partnership to resolve a stormwater issue at 129 Fireside Drive.
Why do we have all these stormwater issues in Stonehenge?
That's a very good question.
We're just moving, like, we're literally just moving down one street from the last one.
Yeah, it's like a.
It developed before we had stormwater.
Yeah. Yeah, this was 1960s through the 1980s was when this area was developed, so there are a plethora of issues for sure.
This is, the item in front of you tonight is actually one that council have looked at previously and agreed to participate in partnership with the homeowner to resolve. What is a little bit unique about this, as the other stormwater projects that we have been involved in, is that what the cause of this problem is a swale that was put in, and we believe it was put in at the time the lots were constructed, that sits at the bottom of a large slope, and it trains onto that vacant property, which is the location, the 129 Fireside, that has an issue. When council looked at this previously, and what we have been doing is, a lot of these storm problems can't be solved by the residents themselves. And it takes an extension of the public sewer to make that happen. So one of the things that needs to happen here is there needs to be an extension of the public sewer, and that's what's shown in red. What council was willing to do at the time, that we have not done on other projects, is to assume the cost of the pipe associated with going from that new catch basin to the back of the property. What's now being asked by the homeowner is that we consider going beyond that and providing the pipe that goes to the, to the end of the swale. And my concern would be, is that, is doing work on private property, providing for benefit for a private use.
Didn't we turn somebody else down, right down the road from him a few years ago, had the same issue?
Woods Lane. Is that Woods Lane?
Yeah, Woods Lane.
Woods Lane? Who's that?
No, we actually did.
Yeah, but I. But we didn't provide, he provided the pipe, didn't he?
No.
Or we provided the pipe?
I think we provided the materials. We provided the labor.
We extended the sewer line. They did all the, they did all the engineering work. And I think they gave us, didn't they, didn't they give the neighbor something, an easement or something like that? Ed's shaking his head, yeah. He just can't remember. But I remember it being a big wall or something they did.
So how much additional pipe gets involved with this extension? Is that shown up there, or is that an addition?
It's not shown here. So what's, what's on the screen in front of you is basically the.
Goes from here back to here.
Yeah, it was the, what's on the screen was the arrangement that we had agreed to in principle, two, two years ago, back in 2020, and for whatever reason, it died for two years, and now the homeowner came back and signed the letter that I sent him saying that this was acceptable to him. But the additional thing that he's asking for is pipe behind the home. It's not shown there. I think it's like 70 or 80 feet and another inlet.
So it's a few thousand dollars.
That's going to the yellow arrow, is the point?
Correct.
So what, we agreed to put in, what, the red?
We're constructing the red.
Right.
We're providing the pipe.
For the green.
For the green. He's asking for.
Additional green.
Yeah.
That's what we discussed, okay.
So are going to be a catch basin there, too?
There have to be.
Has to be, they catch the swale.
So how much more is this going to cost if we supply more pipe?
Yeah, a couple thousand dollars more.
Okay, but see, here we are, we're not helping the people down at the bottom of the hill who have a far worse problem than this gentleman does. I mean, I know it's only 2,000 bucks, but at the same time, where do you draw the line? I mean, I think we're doing a lot for this gentleman.
Isn't he at the bottom, though?
No, he's, he's at 129 right there, so he's where the yellow arrow is.
It's a long little.
And I remember that swale, this is probably completely irrelevant, but I remember that swale being there when I was a kid, because I had a friend that lived right down the street, and those lots didn't sell for a number of years.
I've been there for a while.
I'm sure he got a great deal on that lot, given its condition.
Well, it was, it was the last lot in the plan, and, you know, that swale was there.
Right, that's what I mean. So you got a great deal on the lot anyway, he should be able to afford $2,000 worth of pipe, you know? I mean, my problem is, where do you draw the line? I mean.
I think we're doing more than enough already. I mean, we originally proposed what we proposed because we thought it was reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, and I think we all agree then it was reasonable.
Didn't he agree to it, though, in writing? I thought I saw he signed something.
He did, yeah.
Do we get better pricing on this than he would get? Is it something where he can just reimburse us? Is that the concern?
No, no, we can't do that.
Okay.
Because we don't pay taxes and that, now, that would be a problem.
Yeah. So is there going to be a catch basin at the end of that green line?
Correct. Yeah, well, you can't see it, I drew a square there, but yeah, there is a catch basin.
There's a catch basin.
So it's at here, it would be a second one.
The idea is, that would be a launch point for any type of private system that they would want to install. Well, this, the green would be private, too. You know, we've told the gentleman that we don't have an easement, you know, along the property line, so that's one of the reasons why we don't want to do the installation work or take it over. We don't have an easement. We have no interest in going up between the homes with, you know, machinery and stuff in the future, so we would be willing to supply the materials in green. But from that point, you know, he would have to extend his own additional private system onto whatever parts of his lot he wanted to drain.
Do you want to inspect it? Is all the progress behind, you're going up to him?
Some house on Droid Drive. Because he's right, he's probably in the worst, well, the second worst spot in Stonehenge. Next, you know, surpassed only by.
So I mean, there's no open space here. We don't have anything in there.
He's right underneath the high tension line, isn't he?
Approximately.
Yes.
You know, I mean, he, he signed the letter saying that he agreed, and now he's coming back to the trough again, and I sort of tend to.
So I take it the consensus of council is that we want to stick with the.
I think, that's my position.
That's mine as well. I mean, I thought this was all settled and done, quite honestly.
Is the resident here to speak?
He was invited, I.
Okay, thank you.
Parole's in the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I move they be approved and submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion of the second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries five, nothing. Not seen anything under correspondence. Is there anything anybody wants to discuss or?
I'm concerned we have an audience out here, and they haven't had an agenda item to speak to, is.
Probably miscellaneous.
Okay. Minutes, any? Okay, miscellaneous items. Is there any hearing?
Well, what I wanted to start with is, this actually isn't on the list, we have been in discussions with Pennsylvania American Water concerning the extension of the water What this, what you see here is the intersection of Bebop and Valley Brook Roads. So when the, when the roundabout goes in, there's going to be a tremendous amount of construction there. We saw this as an opportunity for extending the water line from its current location down across, I mean, under the, under the trail, to be able to get water service, public water service to three homes on the other side. We originally, at least I originally thought, in talking to the water company, that they were prepared to pick up the cost of that extension. They have come back and told us that that is not the case. One of the things that, in sitting down with them, they did not realize that the road work on Bebop Road would extend as far as it did, so they will not have to have the cost of restoration of the road, which is, which then doesn't need to be passed on to be able to get the project done. As it stands right now, this project will cost $85,000 to do without the road restoration. I think the road restoration was estimated at $45,000, something like that? So the remaining cost is $31,000 to extend it. And the only thing that I point out to council is that if this doesn't happen now, it may never happen, because when it, when the next time someone wants to look at doing this extension, you're going to pay for the cost of restoration of the roadway, so. I think, could be wrong, but I think there may be residents here on that.
So I'm a little confused. I wanted to extend it, but the water company doesn't want to do, is that what you're saying?
Well, the water company has no problem extending it as long as someone will pick up $31,000 worth of the cost of the project.
I guess I got confused then. So it's not 81, it's down to 30?
It, it's, it is now, the total cost of the project is 85,000. The water company's going to pick up 54,000. The road repaving, 45 or 50,000 worth of work is going to be done by PennDOT, which leaves $31,000 to be able to.
You're not getting a bargain if they pay for the whole thing, right? They have to pay for the road.
Yeah, I've explained that to them. That did work, Frank.
Yeah. Do we have fire hydrants in that? Where's the closest hydrant? I'm wondering.
Oh, boy, it's going to be waiting.
There as well.
You know what? Well, they're.
I'm seeing some red dots right down by Rebecca Drive.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know what, that might be a thing that would be.
Beneficial.
Gary, you're right. I think that that would be beneficial, because there can't be, I think at Rebecca, there's a fire hydrant, but there cannot be another fire hydrant until you get back up to where that light blue line is.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think at 31,000, this is something that I think we can find the money for.
Okay.
I'd agree, absolutely.
So I just need a consensus of council. It's going to come back to you, because there's going to be an agreement that's going to need to be signed and authorized by council. But what, it's going to raise the price some, but we'll incorporate a fire hydrant at the end of that as well.
Now, are the three residents, it's not like a sewage extension, right? So the residents aren't required to tap in, right?
We have done this a bunches of different ways. There, we've done this only based upon petitions and assessments, but in this particular case, these homeowners are going to have significant cost that they're going to incur getting the water line from here back to a house that's here, or here, a house that's way over here. So, you know, I think, I think extending the line as a public project probably makes sense.
I agree.
So did this initially come from a request from these homeowners? Is that how this started?
Oh, that, we have been talking to these homeowners for years and years and years.
Okay.
At least.
I have the letter here. Are you the homeowner, one of the homeowners?
Where are we with sewage in these two resident, or these two?
There is not sewage, and that's not possible to do as part of this project.
Well, Paul, who would actually do the installation? Would it be us?
No.
So we would just have to eat the.
Reach right to the check.
Because I, yeah, and there's an easement there already, I take it?
Oh, it's a, it's a, right away.
Oh, okay.
With that, Paul?
Yes. The other one that I wanted to bring to council's attention, if you've gone up Route 19 lately near where Napa Auto Parts are, and you look into the parking lot, you'll see a giant hole.
Is that our new aquatic facility?
Could be. Well, I don't know that you'd want to swim there. You know, I don't know whether all of council will remember, but.
It was a gas station.
A number of years ago, we replaced the storm sewer under Pleasant View that's about 20 feet deep. What sits in this location, that grassed area right here, is gas transmission lines, one of which is exposed right now, is a high-pressure propane line. So somebody from the transmission company is on site with them while this work is, is going on. But we believe what they're going to do is, what they have found is what we found under our road, is that entire line needs to be replaced, so that's going to be dug up for a while, so.
That entire line, what is the line that?
It's a, the storm sewer is going to be dug up. It's about 20 feet deep. How big is the pipe, Mark?
36-inch.
36-inch pipe.
And it is whose responsibility?
Private.
Private owner, and what the motivate, there was a sinkhole in the corner of the property. The motivation to move forward is a new restaurant is opening in here. We realized what this, this would mean in terms of the impact on the property, and our position was that they couldn't get an occupancy permit until they resolved the issue with the sinkhole.
Where's the, where is the, where does the sewer line go? Like, through the middle of the parking lot?
Yeah, it's a storm sewer. It goes under, it goes under Pleasant View and heads this direction. And so this problem.
There's no way to move it out further towards the road? There's no way to move it out further towards the road?
No. And, and this problem that exists, exists up and down Route 19, so we're going to continue to see this repeated. When we did our line, one of the things that Mark did was to reach out to everybody who had a sewer in there that was about the same age, and tell them that they ought to address the problem before this occurs. We're going to do that again.
This is the same sewer that was up at Pizzazz, right?
No. Similar situation, different sewer. Similar in that, nobody's probably old enough to remember from the area, but the old drawings show that this area, Route 19, there used to be a stream that paralleled the road. And as these properties developed, piece, in a piecemeal fashion, everybody just threw a pipe in the stream, developed their, you know, their, their property, and the next guy hooked on to the next guy, hooked on to the next guy. So there's all these private stormwater pipes underneath these properties, similar to Pizzazz.
Well, I think it's the same stream. I think it's the same stream that came down through there.
Well, no, I mean, Pizzazz, if, if you can picture, you know, this goes down, and the bottom of the hill is their Valley Brook Road, so that's where Brush Run goes underneath. And you'll go up on the other side, and Pizzazz is up in the opposite watershed. But you're right, Bob, same situation, private stormwater. Private storm sewer underneath, you know, a lot that's failing, and it needs addressed, so.
So is McMurray Fit Boot Camp or whatever leaving, and then a restaurant is going in there or something? That's the deal?
I don't know.
The boot camp's gone.
The camp is already gone.
Is it?
Yeah. There's a new Japanese seafood sushi restaurant under construction in that space.
Oh, okay.
And Napa's name, right?
Napa's.
Yeah. We work as you want in a complex. Auto parts and Japanese food.
What happened to the Italian deli?
The Italian deli is across the street in the Ace Plaza.
Sorry, okay, thank you.
Continuing along with good news.
It's not good.
Yeah, on Hidden Valley Road, added out to the, to the Country Club, we have a slide occurring again.
Is that part of the section?
No, this is not the section that we fixed. The section we fixed is near here, but it's not the section that we fixed.
This is about 400 feet uphill from where we built the wall.
They can come in from the other direction, huh?
So Gateway Engineer, we, we've directed Gateway Engineers to go out and do some test borings to give us some, some idea of what can or can't be done to stabilize this.
I'm only going to say this half-jokingly. What would happen if we just vacated that road? Because, I mean, this is going to be another mil, half a million dollar fix like the last one was. I mean, essentially, all we're doing, I mean, I know I'm going to make some people angry, but I mean, essentially, all we're doing is maintaining the access to the Country Club.
I don't know what the legal procedure to vacate a road is. I would think you'd have to have some consignors from the adjacent property.
Well, it exists. There has to be a hearing and review and all that.
Actually, that's precisely what happened in 1968, in looking at the records. Like, when we fixed the slide five years ago, there was discussion about, geez, why did we ever take this road over? It was actually the reverse. We owned a road, it was a public road from the beginning of time, that went through the Country Club property all the way to the creek there at Cecil. And the Country Club requested of council that they abandon, like, a 700-foot portion of road that went through the Country Club, because they wanted to build a golf ball, and that's, that's what happened. So, we owned it, we abandoned a portion through the Country Club, and we retained this, this portion. So, it, it is problematic, for sure.
And you're right, it was a lot of money, and it'd probably be that much again.
Well, it was over half a million dollars, as I recall, the last action.
310,000.
Yeah, I was going to say, it wasn't quite that.
310.
Probably half a million now.
Oh, it easily, yeah, but, but what we don't know is until they do the test borings.
We're hoping for better news. I'm not optimistic.